We call this a special meeting to order, call and roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mavri.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance between the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? And now go to City Clerk Nelson.
The first item on the agenda is the suspension of the two reading requirement for ordinance This is an ordinance removing a sales tax referendum from the November 6, 2018 general election and authorizing a sales tax referendum for the April 2, 2019 consolidated election. Mayor, the council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we suspend the two reading requirement for ordinance O-18-024.
Second.
Motion has been second. The reason why we are suspending or calling for motion to suspend the two reading requirement is because the referendum for the November election has to be certified tomorrow. So, we don't have any time as far as having two readings. And I also wanted to give a somewhat restatement on why we're here tonight and what this is about. We were the first government entity to call for a referendum to be placed on this November's ballot. A referendum is for street work. Since then, the county called for a referendum on the jail issue and then Princeton Elementary called for a referendum on the school issue. So, we have three referendums on one ballot and that's significant. And people are already having a difficult time sorting through the limited information available and it's only going to get worse as more information is released. So, my recommendation to the council today is that we remove our referendum from this November's ballot and reschedule it for the April 2, 2019 election. I believe that we have strong support for our referendum. We hold the referendum in November and it passes, we don't begin to collect sales tax revenue until July 1, 2019. If we delay the referendum and it passes in April, we don't begin to collect sales tax revenue until January 1, 2020. Either way, because we will bond the project, work can begin late next year, but regardless of when our referendum is held and assuming it passes, significant work will not begin until the spring or summer of 2020. This is also an unusual situation when two separate taxing bodies interest intertwine, the school and our streets. A strong proponent of a new school, not only for the future of our kids, but also from an economic development view. When business and industry look for communities to move into or expand, one of the first inquiries they make concerns our educational system, which includes facilities. Our current, multiple facilities need millions of dollars in repairs and upgrades, the cost of which will exceed the cost of the new school. Business and industry also notice in question our infrastructure, of which our streets are the backbone. Both the school and our streets work together, not only for the benefit of our residents, but also for economic growth and the future of our community. My interests have always been what is best for Princeton as a whole. The school is important, our streets are important, and I feel strongly that we should give each the best possible route for success. I'm a believer in referendums on taxation issues. These are up and down votes, so I ask the council for approval to delay our referendum until the April 2, 2019 election in order to give each proposal a fair shot at passage. We'll open up for comments.
Don't we have to read the ordinance in second?
It's our.
We read the suspension, we didn't read the actual ordinance.
Right, this is on the suspension. We're going to vote for the, any questions or dissent?
Okay.
So, this, right now is for the suspension.
I don't know if this is a proper time or if I need.
Second, suspension. We're just voting on the suspension, then we're going to go to the ordinance.
So, call and roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-18-024. This is an ordinance removing a sales tax referendum from the November 6, 2018 general election and authorizing a sales tax referendum for the April 2, 2019 consolidated election. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-18-024.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments?
I, my recommendation is that I'm fine with the suspension of this ordinance. I believe that we should wait until after the election and discuss putting it back on the April election at the first December council meeting.
Is that reasonable?
I just think we should see how these elections go on these two items that are on there and how the voters react to the taxes.
Well, I think, I think our referendum needs to go forward. I mean, I don't think there's any question that our referendum and our request for street work is very popular, from what I understand, around talking to people in the community. I don't think it, you know, it's just a matter of when we held, told it, whether it's in November or in April. I don't think whatever happens this November has any bearing on us going forward with our own in April.
If I could, Ray, I understand what you're trying to do, I think that's a good idea. So, I too am in favor of suspending the referendum request for November, and I like Ray's idea of just scrubbing it until the first meeting in December. It gives us a chance to look at the results, as Ray said, get a chance to get feedback from the community. And also, what happens if the elementary doesn't pass and all of a sudden they want to come back in April and put it on the ballot again? I just, I don't think it delays anything if we wait till the December 1st meeting to discuss it briefly, and then at that time, if we decide that we want it on the April referendum, we can do that. We, I don't think we're incurring any additional costs, so I like that idea, I think that's a smart move. And I think it gives us a chance to get the feedback from the community after the November election, how were those results? What was the feedback from the community?
I'm curious about the feedback, Ray. What are we going to hear, because they're going to be talking about the jail or the school, whether either one of them were successful or defeated. What, how does that bear on our street referendum?
Well, I think that, as Mayor Querom said, we have three referendums now on the ballot. And out of those three, one of the reasons I think we feel like the taxpayers getting squeezed and deciding where they want to put their money, I feel that they're going to give us a report card, they're going to tell us whether, on the county level, whether that jail or law enforcement center is a prudent decision. They're going to tell us if it was a prudent decision to spend 35 million for a school, elementary school system. It doesn't hurt in any way, shape, or form, and we're not slowing down the process for April by waiting to rediscuss this the first meeting in December. I see no problem with that. And I'm not here to call about, we've invested some money in this referendum, I believe we paid for some brochures and some other things, so I'm not here to quibble about that. If the mayor has a suggestion of delaying this, I very respect that. People can change their mind based on feedback we get from the community, because I know a week ago Joel was still deuce about that, and that's fine, I respect that, because that's one of the neat things about when we read an ordinance two times, from the first time to the second time on any ordinance, we get feedback from the community. And there's going to be times that I will change my mind, and I haven't done that yet, but I appreciate the fact that the council respects me if I change my mind on second reading versus the first. So, I don't think it hurts in any way, shape, or form, and I think, I think the public's going to give us feedback, and I think in November, we're going to get that feedback.
Would it hurt to pass this tonight and proceed within April? I mean, if what, I don't see a benefit of waiting. Couldn't we cancel this in January or something if, for whatever reason, we learn something significant? But I mean, to pass it now is not going to have any negative impact versus passing it in December. I don't see what we're going to gain by just putting it off. Let's just get it in place and move forward with it. I still would support Ray's idea. I appreciate your, your, your wisdom and.
But if we keep canceling it, in the public's eye, we are not confident in that. If we put it off, put it off, put it off. So, why should we do it and then come January or February and say, oh, no, we are pulling it from the ballot once again? Needless to say, I was absolutely stunned to read about this, that we were thinking about doing this. I am fine with taking it off of the November ballot. I think we should have a serious sit-down talk in a meeting to make sure we are 100% sure this is the route we want to go, and then decide if we want to put it on the April election.
Well, I think we are 100% because we voted on it to put it on November. I don't, I don't know why that would change.
We were 100% to put it on in November, but here we are canceling it.
We were the, well, as I mentioned earlier, we were the first entity to call for a referendum, and then two more governmental agencies came on after us. All of a sudden, we go from having just ours to having three. And again, as I mentioned, that's a, that's a significant load for people to comprehend as they go into November in deciding what they want to support, what they don't want to support.
But this was no shock that the three were going to be on there, because I had stated in the beginning of this process that the school was going for a referendum and the county. So, this is no surprise that there are three referendums on this November election.
Well, there was nothing from the school that was anywhere near definitive that they were going to have. They hadn't even discussed it at the board level at that time. So, I can't say that there was anything that was definitive that they were going to go through, but they did, so.
Laura, would you agree that what we're doing by taking this off on our ballot is a good idea or a bad idea?
I'm, actually, I'm totally.
In order to simplify the process for the electorate.
I'm totally stunned by this decision to remove it.
Okay, so.
That absolutely stunned me. If we're all in favor of taking it off the ballot, then we're all in favor of it, I will take it off the ballot. But, to put it, to agree to a vote, to put it on April, you know, I'm not going through come February stating, let's remove it because something else is on the election.
And I'm not, I don't think anyone's proposing that. I think that we need to, I think that the mayor's idea is to try and simplify it for the voters, to vote on the two versus the three, and not have, I mean, when you have three, three things being elected or being voted on, the chances are that it's going to dilute the vote overall and people might just make a choice and pick A, B, or C, and that's really not, not how we want them to do that.
And I don't have a problem with taking this off.
Okay.
I have a problem with voting here tonight to put it on April, as you had just stated, in January, February, if we don't want it, we can vote to remove it. I want it, I want it clear to the taxpayers and residents of this town that we are 100% into, in for this. We are in for the long haul. I don't want to, two months before, say, oh, we're going to delay it again.
Believe me, I am not recommending that with February we cancel. What I'm recommending is that we take a positive step tonight, take it off the ballot in November and say, we're going to, we want to proceed, it's important to proceed, and we're going to do so on April 2.
And two weeks ago, did you think that we would be here taking it off the ballot?
No.
So, you cannot say come February, January, February, that you, we won't be thinking to take it off.
I can't imagine why we would.
Do you think, do you think our streets need to be repaired?
I definitely do.
Then, I'm not sure what the.
I am sitting here because a week ago, the council maybe won, this wasn't even brought up, if you were thinking about doing this, to discuss. Here we were, we passed this, yes, we need our streets, yes, we need our curbs, now we are sitting here suspending it. Okay, I don't have a problem with that. Give the two taxing bodies a fair chance to go after their vote. I am not going to sit here two months from now and say, ah, you know what, the county's back on the ballot, the school's back on the ballot, why don't we wait?
This is, this is.
I want to be, I want to be 100% sure that all of us are going to go forward in this April election and further discussion needs, because I did not think, imagine that I'd be sitting here tonight voting to take this off. And it's not that I'm against or for, I didn't imagine this is where I would be when we voted to do the referendum.
Aren't we just moving this? We're not taking, we're not rescinding, removing, we're just changing the.
We are removing it from the November ballot.
And pushing it to April 2 as the ordinance reads. So, it's already, it'll be, it's already to be certified come April, or actually coming January, I think, is when it will be certified.
I don't know what kind of signal we'll send if we just suspend it, take it off with no word whatsoever, as to when we're going to put it back on? We've already decided.
What's the law that says we hear?
That's why I'm recommending we discuss it after the election, Jerry. And I don't see any harm in it.
Do you, do you feel that our streets need to be repaired, Ray, and Ray?
I do. I think that's a loaded question, Joel. We, we want to respect you that you changed your mind on this, and I think that's noble on your part that you want to change your mind on it. If you don't want to respect us with the idea that we want to go into a December meeting and revisit this with the idea, we can see what happened at the election in November, get public's feedback, and again, I did, I echo what Laura said. A week ago, we were in a council meeting, and this was never brought up, after the council meeting, you and I went out and looked at streets, and you echoed twice to me how important this was to the sales tax referendum. And so, I'm not here tonight to beat you up, but I think that you need to respect us with the idea that we go back in December and revisit this with the hopes that it would go back on the referendum, but we need to give a clear voice. I think we're going to get, the public's wondering right now, what's going on here? We, we were for this idea, or we came on, now we're taking it back off? I say, if we're taking it off, we're all, I think we're all in agreement of taking it off tonight, let's, let's go back in December and revisit it.
I would, help me understand, what's your perception of why we're taking this off the ballot tonight?
Well, I believe my understanding is that because of three different things on the ballot, that some people are saying that the public is possibly confused, or they would dilute their decision-making based on that, is what I, I think the public's very well informed, and I think that between now and November, they will be, I think they've learned an awful lot about the law enforcement center, and I think they're going to have their decisions made on that, more than likely, they already have that decision made. I think the elementary school's going to have to educate the public in the next two months as to what they've got in store and the reasons why. And I think that by us taking this off, the third cog off, it just eliminates one less thing they have to discuss, but I have no problem with that again tonight, but let's revisit it in December. I don't, I don't understand, again, I'm not quibbling about what we've already spent to get this thing to where it is today, because we've spent some money. And I know, Jerry, you would ask, how much did it cost to get this on the referendum?
I know.
A couple hundred bucks. So, we're not quibbling about that. We're not quibbling about Joel's decision to make a, to change his mind on this. I'm surprised you won't just say, you know what, I, that makes sense, let's re-discuss it the first council meeting in December.
I guess I just don't know why we're just going to kick this down the road, just kick this, this, why don't we just put it on for a, won't we though?
And again, Laura, a week ago, we didn't even know we were going to be coming to this, discussing this. I mean, I, I think Ray Swanson's brought up a good idea, compromise, that we can move forward today, get this thing off the ballot, and revisit it in December.
Well, I'd like to clear one thing out, just because I asked questions, I'm not disrespecting your position. This is a discussion, so I take offense at the, at the comment that I'm disrespecting your position. I actually, you know, don't think it's, you know, whether we put it back on right now for April 2, I, you know, and discuss it in December, I think the most important thing is suspending it from November, because again, I want the, you know, from my own perspective, I want the, the school to have a very fair shot at passing their referendum, and that's the, that's the underlying cause, reason for my wanting to move this referendum to April. So, if you want, we can suspend, well, it's already been suspended on the second readings, if you want to vote the ordinance down on putting it back on in, well, I'm not sure how that's going to, how that's going to work.
Let me, you, you work right in my corner here. I want to explain a little bit what the discussion I had with John Isaacson was this afternoon. This is an all or nothing ordinance, you can't line item it. It's written so that you are going to remove the referendum in November and add in April. If you pass this ordinance, both actions will occur. If you defeat the ordinance, or if you, if you determine that you're going, you want to take one off, but not the other, then it will be recorded as a failure, and, and what's recorded at the courthouse now of having the referendum in the November election will stand. So, you can't split the vote. It's all or nothing.
Why was it?
Now, what I would suggest, if you don't mind me just finishing a little bit further for your own education, the deadline has not closed for us to file for an April 2 referendum. So, if you pass the ordinance tonight in order to get the, a referendum off the November election, you still will have a cushion whereby you could remove the April 2 before the deadline. You see what I'm saying? So, you, you, you can't decide both ways on the ordinance, the way it's written tonight. It's an all or nothing ordinance. If you choose to not have the April 2 referendum later on, I'm saying that legally, you still have that window before we have to file with the county to certify that April 2 referendum. So, if you pass this tonight, yes, it will go on paper tonight, and it will be certified by the county tomorrow, that you'll have the April 2 referendum. However, you, you will have time to rescind it before the April 2 window closes. You see what I'm saying?
To rescind it, how many votes does that take be?
Uh, I think just, I think six or seven.
So, really, because we can't amend this ordinance tonight, as you've said, we cannot amend it, either it's all or nothing. What we could do is, is then if we're going to vote, pass it tonight with the understanding that we have three commissioners, if I don't have to speak for the other two, I would say one commissioner, me and Ray Mavri, stating that he would like to not automatically put it on for spring without discussion in December, could we have another special meeting next week and, and change, have another ordinance then? So, in other words, you need 48 hours to get the public's input on this or, so we pass it tonight with the understanding, we're going to have a special meeting Tuesday, for example.
We have a regular meeting Tuesday.
About this Tuesday?
Yeah.
Well, then we could put it on the agendas for Tuesday, go ahead and change it to the way we feel, and I feel, that we would then rediscover it in December, rescinding that ordinance.
I don't understand that.
I don't understand why we would do that. If it's set for November 2, why, and if this is passed tonight, it's set on April 2, why would we, next week, rescind it? I don't understand that.
A couple of things I could, so, you know, we, we understand, you know, we got an email on Monday with the information about this, and then social media hits, and I think it made it to newspapers, was in the sporting papers. So, in many ways, the public knew just as much as we did about it, so we don't really get a chance to dialogue, so when, we're kind of in the corner on this as far as, as Pete said, we can't, because of the timing, we can't change this at all. We can't make tweaks to this ordinance.
I have a quick question, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Could they, if this ordinance failed, could a motion be made to, just to send it from, from this reading and not move it to a second?
Say that again.
So, if this, if this ordinance, if we took a vote and it failed, could someone then make a motion to do it how they're saying, to just suspend it from November 6?
I.
Sorry, if you don't understand.
I kind of doubt that, only because the ordinance is a public document. Well, I don't know the answer to that.
When is deadline tomorrow, timeline?
In the business, probably. Well, she's got to certify the state, so.
Can we not suspend this meeting? We do not need the 24, or the 48-hour notice with the suspension of this meeting, and reconvene the special meeting tomorrow at noon?
I suppose you could.
Again, I, I guess I don't understand the reasoning for doing that. I mean, we have a referendum for a street work, all we're doing is delaying it until April 2. We all want the street work, we all passed the referendum, and again, because of situations that have arisen with three referendums on the same election, it, it, it's just a, it's a matter of convenience to the electorate that we're doing this, I think. I mean, I don't understand why we would want to rescind the April 2. You know, I mean, that would be telling, that, I think that would be worse, I mean, I think that would be telling the public that we're questioning our own referendum. I mean, I don't understand why we do that.
I think, again, a week ago, eight, nine days ago, we would not have been, if I would have brought this up at the last council meeting, saying, I make a motion to rescind the, the court rescind the sales tax referendum, I think people would have looked at me and said, where are you coming from, Councilmember Mavri? And here we are arguing about now, we're all agreeing that we're willing to rescind it, but again, I think revisiting in December. But if I would have brought this up nine days ago, you would have all looked at me like, where's he coming from with this?
No, but I think the objective of doing this was clear and it makes sense, I believe, to most of us, that taking the one referendum off the November ballot is, makes sense to the voters. Would you agree with that, or don't you agree with that, Ray?
I think we all, I, I know I agree with that, I can't speak for any of the council members.
So, that's a good thing. So, and all we're doing is we're just going to take this ordinance, this referendum, we're going to push it out to the April, it's that simple.
That's where the problem starts, is we're all in agreeance to take it off the November election.
For a good reason. We all agree to the reasoning.
Our debate here, our split, is automatically pushing it to April, or let's talk about putting it on April and December.
That would be correct. I think that clarifies.
I, I still can't get my head around why, what there is to discuss. We've already agreed that the referendum's going to go forward, we did that some time ago. We're just deciding on one day that it's going to go forward.
Now, Pete, if I could, and I appreciate the clarification as City Clerk on this, is it possible to take a quick recess and call Attorney Isaacson and get some input from him on this?
I don't know if I could reach him, but I suppose we could attempt it.
That might be an option.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So, what do we, how do we do that?
I make a motion that we take a recess to contact John Isaacson?
Second, motion's been second.
Was that Swanson?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, what? 15, 20, 10 minutes. 10 minute recess.
Call and roll.
Swanson.
Aye.
Mavri.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman. No.
No.
You said no? Querom, no?
Please, me and my glasses.
Me too, and I didn't leave a bottle with my baby. I might have to sneak out, we'll see.
She loves babies.
I know.
I didn't get a chance to stare by her.
She loves being outside sometimes, I was like, off the ground, I was surprised.
What's he worrying about?
On the circus and woman tonight.
You think there'll be protesters there?
Probably.
My kids are like, when I, when I would want to work at the circus, like, rode elephants every time. Like, can't, you know, won't.
Yeah.
Can't do that anymore.
One of my really good friends, woman, it's like, like, she won't even go to Amity Kingdom, like, she's, you know, and I'm, I don't even like the circus, I don't like it, so I just go. But, I, I text her, I'm like, are you going to the circus? She's like, no.
Yeah, I feel weird just wearing these, what do you mean?
I know.
Everything that's wrong with my kids is like, going, I don't, like, literally, everything. Can't ride in the back of the station wagon, basically, or like, any of the, be real funny. You can't really sleep with your kids anymore, everything, it's like, nothing.
I was saying, I remember my kids put on a car and then pushing mine cooler.
Oh, I mean, yeah, my, my girlfriend tries to hold a kid, they kept a cooler in the back of the station wagon, like, I mean, not that I'm saying that it's a good thing, I'm just saying, you hit that age where, like, everything you do, throwing out, you're like, oh, God.
Yeah.
I don't like to find that out. Oh, yeah, they were in the metal bars. My brother was born at St. Francis, because he was like, he was a little child, they brought him home, spending all his time in the hardware box, like, literally, they.
Yeah, what if he did that now?
Right, you can't even get discharged until you know, you're 100 feet, you know, like, here's your kid, and he's, fuck.
I didn't do it.
And if people were freezing cold, and then, it would be good.
Yeah, I could believe, like, shit.
I don't even think you're that fun, my mom, to my kids at circus, my youngest, she would die, she would like, just buy me food and candy, popcorn, yeah, but you're not, not only buying those snacks, I want a part of them. not only supplying those snacks, I want a part of them.
Wow. Put it on there.
I could just, just hit the hammer, make him happy, that's what we should do.
It's back to the lowest level it's been since 2005.
Okay.
Well, it did, but probably he went up and came back down, and he got held by these companies, stuff like that.
I wanted to tell you, I just, we're always in a hurry, and he got on the other side, and he was trying to follow the story.
Really, but you're saying that it wasn't the right one?
Yeah, but it's hard.
I will be, if I do that.
I know. And I've mentioned, I'm like, I would need to see that, but I'm going to do it, 'cause I will, I will drive from the jail, and I hope I can, I give a...
Airwork, work.
I don't...
I was in 48's ago.
Yeah, I don't...
I really, really...
So weird.
My kids, now, I don't know, they just fly helicopters, which is a great option. Be a little more involved with that.
Yeah, is that all these people, you know, for example, try to...
He did webinar, not webinar, like, a tutorial course.
So, when that's bringing, he...
He does online stuff, supporting stuff, I'm just sort of a website. And he didn't have it, like, so dry, and if people had any questions, he was like...
When there's a question mark at the end, it's like a pause, we go ahead and interject.
He's good at what he does, not lying, making it involve no people, like, he doesn't get on anybody.
He, yeah, like, anti-outline, whatever, agent, or, or she has, you know, she has high...
I know, I think, bunch of tiny guys, they're service, they're spraying, they, they're six days, and they, they're always, they're on to go, every day, they're in hotels every night, and that's their thing, they gotta, they gotta move, and spray, which is kinda fun, a lot, but, um, they, on a good day, you're putting this spray, and the other guys, they got smaller helicopters, they fly away, they're getting sprayed. They're just putting them off. You roll off, you just, like, you have helicopters that, that could crash, nobody got hurt, that's the main thing. They weren't, well, definitely, it wasn't, it was just two errors that were made, one, uh, I don't know, the pilot, the, the chief, whatever, with one pilot, they landed on this little, uh, stand, semi, or something, so helicopter lands, the ground guy, he hooks up the hose, it's a two-inch diameter hose, and it bumps into the, into the pod, and the helicopters. He had jumped down, do something, and the pilot seemed that he had already disconnected the hose, and started to throttle, and it throttled, it got about 12 feet in the air. So, that was not... And then, uh, the other thing, it was, actually, both helicopters crashed, when they first loaded up, and it's, I've done some of this, again, I'm not, the helicopters were really heavy, and so they get, from a few laps of spraying, and they lose some of the weight, um, real sensibly, they can always turn into the wind, at the end of the row, that way you can use that, and then, with a way to approach, you just, the guy, you turn against the wind, and then, they, they're opposite, they're pushing down, and it cracks, and that was so, and Billy, I heard, like, he lost, uh, about, uh, 700,000 of the helicopters in the, so, that, 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 that.
So, he goes through the ones that were there?
He did, yeah. It's that one, he flies, he did it to the store, then, or the restaurant, or something, otherwise, I guess, it's quite a high, you can hear the stories. It wasn't, he flies, it's, it's called an R, it's, it's, it's got, but then, man, various people, like, it's low, it's, yeah.
We're gonna reconvene our, uh, special meeting, and, uh...
Okay, the advice of council is, is that there could be no revisions to the written record, or to the written ordinance tonight. Um, and, uh, his suggestion was that, um, the ordinance could be, uh, voted affirmatively tonight to, uh, remove from the November ballot and add to April. And then, at a later date, you decide, before the window closes, you, uh, as I've said before, if the, uh, council determines that the, uh, April, um, referendum is not appropriate, then, before that window closes, you can come back and remove it.
When does the window?
I didn't ask that question, but I believe it's in December. So, it'll be after the election.
This, this was really, could be nothing more than a, a, a simple gesture to the electorate to try to make things a little easier, to give the schools some support, and, uh, and move forward with our referendum, again, in April. We already passed the referendum. We've already passed it for street work. So, why anybody would want to rescind it, or, you know, I don't know, but that sounds like, according to council, that's what should be done. And I would have no problem coming back if, if the three council members up here who are, I don't know, showing concern about what we wanna do with our streets wants to discuss about it, about the referendum going forward in April, we can do that in December.
Well, I think we already have an approved referendum for streets, it's just, what the discussion may be, Mayor, is that in December, there may be a discussion about when it is, uh, that referendum is gonna be on the ballot. Right?
I understand the concerns for our streets. My concern here is not what we need for our streets, is our conviction to moving forward with this. And I am not convinced on our conviction, because we are sitting here right now delaying. I am not convinced on that conviction. And I wanna be certain of our conviction come December to move forward on this.
Well, I think that we leave for tonight with an approved ordinance, Laura, and then, coming April 2nd, there will be a referendum on that ballot, unless this council decides to change it.
Suspend it again?
Yes, that's right.
Right, and that is not my conviction.
Well, our, our conviction, our commitment tonight is to proceed.
And come December?
Well, the three of you have decided you wanna raise an issue on it, so you have that right in December to raise that issue. And we will discuss it in December.
No, our, it, it will be already on the ballot, it is, until, unless...
It's on the ballot now.
Unless someone decides in a few hours that, "Let's change this vote, and let's take it off the referendum." Uh, there is no guarantee that we aren't going to be sitting here in April once again in front of the public, saying, "We're not really sure on this, let's suspend it till November."
Why would we do that?
Why would we do this?
Because of this, because, well, I think that's been pretty clear, the, uh, three ordinance, the three referendums at the same day, it's a crowded field, uh, showing support to the school, letting them have their best shot at passage. If they, if that school referendum should fail, I don't see them coming back in April, 'cause I don't think they'll have enough time to regroup. Because if it fails, they're gonna have to, they'll probably take another look at what they, what they wanna do. So, I don't see, if the school fails, them coming back in April, I just don't think that would happen.
That is the school board's decision whether they're coming back.
I agree with you 100%.
And we have no idea what their decision is, if they're coming back into April, or throwing it down the road. We don't know. We cannot sit here and assume that they will not be ready for April. I will not do that today.
Just, just like, it was the same thing that you just brought up a little while ago, when we put our referendum on the ballot, we didn't know the school was gonna come on. You, you said that they were, but they had not met, they had not discussed it, and, you know, the argument had reversed.
In the paper, several days prior, they hired an engineer and an architect, of course, they were putting it on the November ballot.
I think in December, Laura, the school board, if they do fail with this referendum in November, will see that the city is planning and is committed to an April 2nd referendum. That may affect when they wanna put their referendum on. But at least we would've made that commitment, that we're gonna be there in April to get this passed.
So, the school would bypass April for us?
Well, they're gonna see that we're on there, and that, they may make a decision one way or another, because they know that the city is gonna be there in April.
And they saw that we were gonna be there in November.
And they proceeded and put their, uh, referendum on the ballot. And that was a decision that they made, for whatever reason. But they're gonna be able to make that same decision, educated decision, in December, because they're gonna see that on April 2nd, the city's gonna be there for a street referendum. So, that's part of our commitment, is we know we wanna do this, let's set the date, and then let the school, or the jail, or whoever wants to look at the next election, at least they'll know for sure that the city's gonna be there, and on April 2nd. I think what the mayor offered is a one-time only, let's move this off of November, put it in April, and then let the chips fall where they may.
And again, we've already passed the referendum. It's just a matter of the date.
So, Pete, then, um, it's either all or nothing, that's what John's saying. So, um, I, I, I wanna make sure that the elementary school did not burden, and I appreciate, um, if the mayor's making this decision, I, I will support him on that, uh, to make that, um, easier for the school to have an opportunity to get that to pass. Um, I would just go on record as saying that, if I voted, if I voted for this tonight, um, I would rather had the opportunity to revisit it in December, and not automatically put it on. Even though it could be rescinded, I would rather have the opportunity to, had the opportunity in December to revisit it, and then decide to put it on. So, I, I will, at this point, be voting for this, because I, I don't want the school to feel that we were not supportive of the school, I want them to have the opportunities in front of them to get that to pass, if that's, if that's how the individual taxpayer feels when they go to the polling booth. So, Ray, how do you feel?
I agree with your, your statements there. I will support this also for the best shot for the school, and I think we can still discuss this in December, and if at that point we need to rescind it, we can rescind it.
Could I just, you know, the word "rescind" means we're not gonna do it at all? That's really not it, it's just a case of, we would reschedule, right? The referendum for the streets has been approved, it's just, oh, are you suggesting maybe to scrap that? I just wanna be sure I understand.
In the discussion in December, we'll, we'll battle it out then, I guess. I mean, um, what outcomes there are, and what situations arise.
Okay.
Pete, why was it worded like this? I was just wondering.
I was what, worded like what?
Uh, take off and put, push forward to April.
We had 48 hours, and I did it for efficiency.
To give you a record, um, this whole thing, and, you know, you mentioned, we were here at a meeting a week ago yesterday, and this wasn't brought up. Uh, if you were to say that we'd be sitting here tonight at that time, I would be extremely surprised as well, because I didn't come up with this, or decision, or even think about it until Thursday, this past Thursday. And, uh, it came out of a conversation I had, uh, with the resident here in Princeton, and, uh, again, it's just, it just made all the sense in the world, when you're looking at what we're dealing with, with our, uh, with our local school system, and, and the needs that, that I think we all agree with. I think we all agree that we need it in school. And, uh, it just made sense to do this, because I wanna give them the best shot possible at passing their, uh, their referendum.
Were you unaware of the deadline at that point, Joel?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I talked to, I don't think I may have talked to Rachel, but I, you know, this was November, I thought we had, I thought we'd have maybe six weeks before the election. I mean, I, you know, I, Pete, I think, is the one who called, uh, the county clerk on, uh, Friday, might've been Thursday.
Monday.
Or Monday, and then, then we find out that, yeah, Thursday's the deadline, so...
We called it on the same day that the special meeting was held.
So, and so, for that, you know, I mean, it's an idea that can, I apologize in short notice, but sometimes, something like that comes up, and you have to, you have to fight with it, if it, if it means enough, um, to the community, which I think it does. Any further comments?
I will be voting for the removal of the November. Um, like the other two commissioners, I will be against moving it to April 2nd, um, just for the record, and I believe that we should be supportive of both taxing bodies that are on the election.
Any further comment? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye. Motion passed. Um, any further comments? We're gonna entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting and reconvene at our next regular meeting. And we'll, we'll adjourn our special meeting tonight and reconvene for our regular council meeting on Tuesday, September 4th, 7:00 at City Hall.
Roger.
Motion for the second call roll?
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
All right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.